Hey, everybody.
Hey, Kaylin, this is Karen Devine and for everybody, Karen, I've known her for over 12, 13 years now from my time in CV. Well, the PSB office was a mile from my last office. And Karen's been out in board meetings, goes across the state pre-COVID, probably post-COVID, and goes and talks to boards during meetings and provides board support services and all that kind of stuff. So it's Board Recognition Month, as you all know. And so Karen is going to come in and say kind things about the board. And.
It's great to be here. Thank you.
Yeah, we're very delicate flowers, so we need a lot of encouragement.
I think everyone does right now. So let me know when you would like me to share my.
I'll call you, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will mute.
Don't forget to change your name, Kaylin. Or Joe, don't forget to change Kaylin's name. Or any other co-host.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, Kaylin, your name's still not updated.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I had to deal with the little rascal asking me for a passcode to his device. I'm sure you guys can relate. My goodness. It's like, get out of here.
Passcodes to my device?
At my age, Kaylin, I'm the one asking for the passcode for my kids.
Is Chris Spear the little rascal?
Oh, I don't, not this time, not this time.
Hey, Stephen, you can use your little car, car remote and beep your horn for your.
That I can still do.
Are you guys waiting on me to get started?
Well, we're ready for you.
All right.
No pressure.
Who's doing the sound effects tonight?
John.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening for the QCSD Board Meeting and Happy New Year to everyone. We're off to a great new year, great start. So I'm going to call this meeting into order and we're going to start with the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next on our agenda, here's our roll call. Terry, if you'd like to go ahead and give us the roll call.
Okay, Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
Here.
Ms. Weed.
I believe she is not going to be joining us tonight.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McCucci.
Here.
Mr. Reimers.
Here.
Mr. Spear.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Hello.
And Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so for announcements, this meeting is being recorded. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I'll need a motion to approve the minutes from the December 3, 2020 meeting.
So moved, Mr. Klein.
Second, Mr. Kern.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right, next on the agenda is going to be our general public comment. Terry, do we have anyone signed up?
I believe we do, and Eileen's going to read the public comment tonight. Mrs. Finlayson.
Thanks.
There's one public, public comment from Kathy Infante, Milford Township. You receive an email from your school nurse stating, one week ago, a student in your class tested positive for COVID. Were you within six feet from any of the 23 students in your class for more than 15 minutes? With the student's identity withheld due to privacy, you worry because you have been up and down the aisles assisting students and not takes hold of your gut. After a conversation with the nurse, the conclusion is no exposure. However, your anxiety continues to grow. Perhaps you forgot time spent with a student. You travel home, you live with a family member who has multiple risk factors, a loved one who cannot get COVID. How can you be sure? The mask goes on inside your home. You isolate from all who live there. You frantically call the health department, tell a doc, Lehigh Valley Health Network, and your family physician, each time explaining the situation, each time hoping for some peace of mind. In the end, you realize a single COVID test will not put your mind at ease because tomorrow it could happen again. And that is the end of public comments.
Who was that again, Eileen?
Kathy Infante.
Thank you.
I believe, is that rap, new rapid testing up and running in Upper Bucks County for staff members yet?
It started right before the New Year, sir, so yes.
Yeah. The one thing that I did hear about those rapid tests, and I'm not sure, I mean, we don't have a very high attendance this meeting, but one thing that I have heard is that if you don't have symptoms for at least 24 hours, that those tests are meaningless. And I don't know, Keith, if you have any knowledge about that. So if you have no symptoms at all, then I'm not sure how helpful those tests are. Have you heard that, Keith?
Yeah, I mean, testing, there's always, there's always difficulties with testing and accuracy of testing. And, and so, yeah, it's, I mean, her situation's probably not unlike any we've, I mean, we've experienced this every day, and so I'm sure it's absolutely frightening. I think, I mean, I feel for her. I know, I don't know what else to say.
Good news is, we're going to be having some vaccines on the way for staff members, so that is at least a light at the end of the tunnel for some.
Absolutely.
I spent, if not superintendent's report, but I gave, since this is the topic, I spent about an hour and a half with superintendent of the county and with Dr. Damsker for the first part of it. They're, all of our nurses and our clinical people within the district have been offered their shots. Most of them finished that last week, our vaccinations. We're, the rest of the employees and contractors, bus drivers, food service handlers, custodial staff with SSC, they're all considered part of one B. And we are leaning forward, soon as we get a chance to get the vaccinations, we're going to offer it. We anticipate a high participation rate. And last week's due date was somewhere around the beginning of February, so first week of February. So I hope it's before that. I've coordinated with Dennis Flieger over here, the CEO of St. Luke's Quaker Town or Upper Bucks. And he is going to, and he's, he's just waiting for the shots to be available for one B. They're still taking care of one A, and so they can't release it to one B yet.
And will our nurses be providing those, administering those shots to staff members? Or will that, do they have to make appointments and go outside of the district to get those?
Well, other districts are doing kind of different things. What our game plan is here is our, tomorrow, Melissa Kelly, who I was just checking to see if she's on the call, but she's just leaving work, our nurse, a couple, like, four hours later, after the school day because of making contact calls and all that kind of stuff. She and our stray nurse will go get trained or go over to St. Luke's tomorrow to, to observe how they're handling the vaccines, all the requirements. And our nurses have volunteered to administer the nurse, the program. Nancy, could you uncover if you're right there?
Yeah.
If you would share with the community and with the board about your expectation and what the nurses are set up, they're going to do, and how you want to run it?
Well, I want to have them observe the clinic and then come back and meet with them so that we work out logistics in a way that is going to, you know, conform to the medical aspects of it that I, I don't, you know, have the expertise in. But ideally, according to the health department, if you have a nurse to prepare the syringes, a nurse to administer the vaccine, and a clerical, you know, person to fill out the vaccination cards, it's reasonable to expect that you can vaccinate approximately 20 people per hour. And that would mean that in most of our buildings, in other words, we wouldn't need to bring people together and have them go in and out of like a centralized location. I think we would be able to do it at the building level with, with the building nurse. So it's a familiar person for staff members and so forth, which would probably increase the, you know, the number of people that were willing to participate. So I think we're going to be able to do it like in a site-based way. It probably will involve not having teachers available during that time at the end of the day for one or two days in most of the buildings while we're, you know, working through that. And then it, it's possible that we would have to look at a day of virtual instruction in the larger buildings if necessary. But I think getting everybody vaccinated as quickly as we can is really important to, to getting us to a, to a better place. So I'll, I'll know more once the nurses have attended that and come back and we meet and talk about, you know, what's the best way to, to get this done. There are some, you know, insurance issues and concerns about that that Zach has been working through. And so at this point, we think we will be able to administer the vaccine to all of our employees, but we're not sure about contracted employees that aren't actually employed by us. So our custodians are, are bus drivers. So we're still working through some of those issues because there are some liability issues associated with it.
Yeah, and, and so, so it's key. So I, I, you know, having participated, in fact, on multiple occasions, I've been actually at a vaccine clinic vaccinating people the last two weeks. You know, there are strict criteria that are, that are federal and state mandates about how these vaccines are being rolled out and, and really some strict criteria as far as, you know, how they're, how they're stored, how they're prepared, and, and really how they're administered, how they're tracked. All that stuff's being required of organizations that are actually administering it. So, you know, while I know it's noble to want to do everybody internally, I think it may be more feasible to sort of pair up with a, a network that you could send your team over to and have them do it. I know we are, you know, the network that I work for is, is doing one A and one B group already. A portion of the one B group, the high-risk population greater than 75. And, but there are, there are truly tracking issues with regards to vaccinations that are required from the state. And so, I don't know, I'd be happy to, to talk offline about it a little bit more.
I would appreciate that very much. And like I said, I, some of that information is probably what the nurses will bring back with them from, from going to the St. Luke's clinic and doing their, you know, observation and training tomorrow, but.
I will tell you that we aren't, we aren't wasting even, even one vaccine. So, you know, they're, they're so, they're precious to every, everybody who gets some issue to them. And so at the end of the night, if we have one or two left over, we're looking for people to vaccinate. So it's vitally important that, that, that we make sure. I think, I think the best approach is linking up with, with a network that can help us, you know, kind of get through these.
Well, Mr. Flieger, the CEO of St. Luke's here in town, we're talking about that, that exact same thing. At the end of the day, we were talking today, texting back and forth about having a group of people ready to go if they have vaccinations that are left over from their one A category, so we can start moving in one B. So, thank you very much for that, sir. And that's all we have, Kaylin, on, on that.
All right, well, I'm going to throw it back to you for superintendent and report.
Oh, great. Good evening. And for all those who are new to, to the board meeting, I'm Bill Harn, the superintendent. Tonight, we have a guest with us from the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, Karen Devine. She's on the screen there. Karen, I've been working with her as a superintendent for the last 13 years. She works there and doing board member services. And, and I, and she's just a wonderful person. She normally is out in person. But this year, obviously under COVID, she's going to join us from central Pennsylvania via Zoom and share some words of appreciation as it is School Board Appreciation Month.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for including me on tonight's agenda and especially for allowing me to be here virtually. I want to thank you for all you do and thank you for your membership to PSBA. Before I get to my primary purpose for being here tonight, I do have a few reminders I would like to share. January 21st at 12:30 is our first monthly exchange. It's for all school directors who want to come together virtually and network from across the state. And our complimentary virtual school board secretary's conference is January 27th. For board leadership, we are holding the Essentials of Board Leadership Workshop Series. It began on yesterday, and it's running through April 14th. And the Weekly Buzz, we started that right after the pandemic began. It began in the beginning of April, the Weekly Buzz. That's on Tuesdays at 12:30, and I know some of your board members have attended from time to time. It's for board leadership, and the 2021 series just began this Tuesday, and that's going to run through June 29th. 12:30, virtual, complimentary. You can get together with other board leadership from across the state and talk about the issues at hand. Now, tonight, it is my privilege to be here to honor your school directors for their service to the Quaker Town Community School District. January is School Director Recognition Month, and it's a time for us to celebrate and recognize the challenging and vital work boards do on behalf of students, schools, and families. As volunteers and locally elected officials, school directors are invested in their communities as members, friends, local leaders, parents, and engaged citizens and neighbors. During this month designated for recognizing these public servants, please join me in expressing gratitude for the school director's dedication to the success and safety of every student. January has been School Director Recognition Month since our board's proclamation more than 35 years ago. But this year, now more than ever, it's been important for me to get out virtually and personally thank as many members as possible. So I want to thank you for your service, especially during these most challenging times, and for allowing me to be here to express our gratitude. Now, each of you will be receiving a certificate that looks much like this, but it will have your name. And again, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you do, for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm hoping I can come out again in the future in person. And I hope you have a great evening and stay well, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Good to see you again this evening.
And thank you for describing all the kinds of names that people might call us, but not actually the ones that they probably do. You save those for Facebook.
Okay, well, yeah, it's been my pleasure. I, I just want to show my appreciation. And it was good seeing you again, Dr. Heiner.
Thank you.
And if it's okay, I'm just going to stay for a little while and then I'll drop off.
Thank you, Karen. We only have one, one report tonight. We have a lot of read-only reports there. Part of our superintendent goals for the year updates. We have the nurses' report, please, a very comprehensive report, report that Melissa Kelly had put together with our team of nurses. And it's all read-only. It's out there in the public and all those different reports. Ms. Edwards, will you talk about our behavior?
Yes, I love to talk about behavior. Joe, you put up a real short presentation. This is like a five-minute augmentation to the detailed reports that board members have in the executive content in the agenda. I'm just setting the stage for this. As a reminder, all of our buildings have positive behavior intervention support programs in place. We particularly want to acknowledge in the work with those programs, the work of Lisa Plitty and our pupil services department in supporting buildings. And one improvement that has helped a lot with our reporting of attendance is that now every building K-12 uses the Swiss platform to record ODRs. And in deference to Mr. Kern, I, you know, spelled it out there, it's Office Discipline Referrals, so that I am not using mysterious acronyms. And when you look at the detail reports, you can see some of the ways that the Swiss platform allows building principals to slice and dice the data for their building so that they can identify trends and, and then create action steps to address those. And an example of that might be that they notice that there's a spike in infractions during recess. And so then they might be able to put some strategies in place to teach students certain games to play cooperatively or things like that that help reduce the number of discipline referrals based on the trends that they see in the data. And as always, our response to infractions, when we talk about discipline and behavior, the, the purpose is to educate students, teach them how to behave appropriately, and support them in making good choices. So there certainly are consequences for infractions, but, but all of our, all of our work also includes educational and support services that help students learn to make good behavior choices. Okay, so with that, this is not a mistake. All right, this is the ODRs through December in both years. Okay, so it's August through December in 1920, and then the same period of time in 2021. And if you look at some of the buildings, you barely can see any discipline referrals for 2021 at all. And that is real and conforms to what principals are reporting that, that they're seeing in their buildings. Okay, then, next slide, Joe, because this is a five-minute presentation. Then we looked at the top categories for, in the secondary buildings. And again, you see major, major decreases in the, the highest-flying categories. And on the next slide, you see the same trend in, in elementary. Okay, so last slide or next slide. The, the key, though, the reason I wanted to share this and just speak about it for a moment is that we believe there are lessons that we can learn from the things that we have been required to do because of the pandemic that can help us continue this positive behavior trend in the future. So as an administrative team and speaking with individual principals, we've been talking about like, why, so why is that? Why are students behaving differently? One piece of it that's very clear is the relationship between engagement and behavior. So some of our students that perhaps are not as engaged in school are what we see from the truancy data and some of the other information are virtual this year. So since they're not physically in school, they are not acting out with behaviors related to, you know, not being engaged well in, in their learning. So that certainly has an impact, and we certainly want those children back in, in school. Other things principals have shared with me is that there's a kind of unintended consequence of social distancing, which is that students have more personal space in the classroom. So you have a lot less incidents where somebody's green marker is rolling into somebody else's area of the table, which then leads to, you know, throwing the marker back or, you know, other things like that. So it seems to be a positive for many students that they have more personal space within the, within the classroom. We're also seeing that some of the restrictions on things like recess, where students are doing recess as a class as opposed to just kind of everybody being outside, that that cohort approach is really leading to some stronger relationships and friendships within the classroom and has dramatically decreased the number of incidents that are coming out of recess, for example. And then one more, and again, this is not one that will survive next year, but there is much less unstructured large group time because of the pandemic restrictions. And again, that's corresponding to, obviously, no discipline at a time of day when often, you know, that occurs. So anyway, the important takeaway, I guess, that, that I would want you to know is that we are working through the why, you know, are we getting, why are we getting these more positive results? And what are the things we can learn from that that we can continue even as we're able presumably next year to return to a, a more, you know, quote-unquote, "normal" school environment? And as I said, you have all of the detail reports in, in board docs, if you are interested in looking at those. And that is it. I think I just did about five minutes, so.
Nice work. Yeah, I think that, I mean, it makes sense to me, the, the kids don't have as much time to interact. And we know that when they have that opportunity to interact, there's opportunity for conflict. So it seems to, to make sense. I don't, I know that there's some lessons we can take away, and that's sort of the silver lining of, of, you know, of course, the kids not being able to have that opportunity. All right, I'm going to move on to our standing committee reports. And Mrs. Weed is not with us. Is there? I wasn't prepared. I know I'm on the policy committee. Is there anyone that wants to speak to? I know that, or Nancy, and if you want to speak to that. I know we did update quite a few of our policies as we have PSBA reviewing those for us. Would you like to share some additional items that we worked on as well?
Yeah, we got through a bunch of the 100s. If I recall, we also cleaned up something for Aaron, if I'm not mistaken, around maybe Title IX or something like that. And had some discussions around some, a couple other policies that we didn't really act on. But, yeah, I don't know if I missed anything major. Nancy, yeah?
No, nothing significant. We're working our way through the 100s. I think next week, the committee is really very efficient at working through these. And so I would expect we'll be done the 100s next month. And we have the 200s that PSBA sent to us that, that then we'll start working on those.
And, and for Jeff, the first readings don't have to physically be done at the meetings, correct? You can just list them on our, our agenda?
Yeah, you just move the table for first read, and then you'll discuss it more appropriately at your, when you consider them as being adopted or not adopted.
Perfect. Thank you. And then. Perfect. Thank you. And then I'll move on to our facilities committee, Mr. Spear.
Ah, I muted the wrong computer. So we did meet last week and we have our final, our final numbers for the Nighting Project. It, it appears as though we're going to be left with about $1.75 million of the original $1.9 million contingency fund for the renovation. The total cost of the renovation was 27.35 million. And Mr. Socha said that the district has a meeting schedule with their financial advisors to determine the next steps on how to allocate the remaining funds for future capital projects. There was a, a change order, though, that came toward the end. The terrazzo floor was damaged by both the, the rushed construction at the end and also the hand sanitizers. So that, that's a new thing that this volume of hand sanitizer be used on a brand-new floor. The estimated cost to repair these floors is about $32,000. And, you know, a, after the explanation, I, I sort of came up with, this is the cost of us pushing them so hard to get everything done. You know, we did have to move equipment in, but after the floors were done, we were, we were really rushing to get the, and, and to complete it in that amazing amount of time. It, it seems like this is just our cost to get it done that quick. And, and I believe it was a, a fair, a, a fair compromise that we worked out. So we're also going to be putting out an RF, an RFP for trash and recycling. And also, we're going to let the administration work on contracts with our landscaping and groundskeeping to see if whether or not we should put an RFP out or just negotiate a new contract with our current landscapers. So that was it for the facilities.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the education and curriculum committee, Mr. Klein.
Good evening, everybody. We did have a meeting prior to this meeting this evening. And during that meeting, we listened to Jen Corolla and Jason Magwitch give a presentation reviewing the Pathways program, which for those that aren't familiar with it, it's a program for really student career planning. We reviewed the Phase One implementation of it and where that stands. There was also a review of additions to the Phase One plan. There's, as part of this, there's a new course called Spanish in the Workplace that's going to begin in school year 2021, '22. And the target audience for this particular course is really tech school students because it has to do with using Spanish in a business environment. However, it's open to any student that wants to take it. The Pathways group has space in the high school library now for doing things like, you know, having members of the community come in that are interested in maybe looking at students to hire, that type of thing. On the 26th of the month at 6:00 PM, there will be a parent presentation on career, I'm sorry, on the Pathways program and it'll be virtual. So I guess there's information out there about that on the website. It's, it's a very interesting program. Phase two of it is now currently in progress. And it looks like we're poised to complete all phases on time. The program is expected to be up and running by late fall. George Bannis and Lauren Nielsen are working with the community to get the word out about this. And both spoke a little bit during the meeting about what they've been doing and, you know, what a good program that this is. We also touched upon the elementary school musical instrument bid request. It, it looks like we're going to need to get some musical instruments for the elementary schools. This is just a, a request to actually go out to bid. It's not actually asking for us to buy anything just yet. The mid-year curriculum update is on board docs. Dr. Harner joined the meeting, so of course it blew our schedule all to heck. So. And then summer school. We're looking into, since last year's cost of summer school was covered by some grants that we had, we're looking into whether that should continue since it, it made the program better for the students. They did better. And so this has been budgeted for this year, but we're trying to find ways to see if, either through grants or, or other avenues that we could possibly cover the cost again. So that is what we talked about at the educational curriculum meeting tonight.
Thank you very much for that. And next is the Upper Bucks Tech School, Mr. Akmonowits.
Well, thank you. The last meeting in the Upper Bucks County Technical School other screen was December 17th. We had an executives' session that day. Student of the Month for December was Ethan Clark. Ethan Clark is a small engine program. He's a senior from Quaker Town Community High School. Congratulations, Ethan. Normal bookkeeping, paid some bills. The other thing was, we elected new leadership. Sorry, new president, James Alwell. Vice President was, is Vice President, Chris?
I believe it's Megan Vaness.
And you were treasurer?
Yes.
Okay. We opened the AgTech building and we also approved for a small change order in the roof that was a little bit unexpected in repair of one of our ceilings. And that is all I have this evening unless, Chris, if you have anything you'd like to add.
Uh, no, no, pretty much covered it.
And I'm done. Thank you.
That Ag building, you guys have been, that's been a work in progress for quite a while, hasn't it?
Well, we really hit like a speed bump last year when pretty much construction hit a dead stop in the middle of just beginning to start it. And then we had to order stuff and then you couldn't get all the places to order it from. It was, yeah, a little bit of a drama show. But I think we're good to go.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm going to move on to our finance committee report, Mr. McCucci.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. So we had our, our financial me, our, our finance meeting on last Thursday. And I got a couple of topics here to talk about. So first and foremost, we had our independent audit presentation by Edmund, who was a part of the Barbara Kane Thornton and Company, who was our auditors for the last, I believe, three years. I will draw your attention that this is posted on the district's website. And it's something you, you should each just sort of take a glance, glance at. I think it's like 76 pages, so. Read the whole thing. It's a little bit much, but bottom line, no significant deficiencies in internal controls over our financial reporting. There was no material weakness in internal controls over our financial reporting reported and, and unmodified opinion over the district's compliance with the federal award program and rules and regulations idea, IDEA cluster. I just want to jump over to that because I wanted to highlight a couple of things from the report. But on page seven, it really talks about our, our debts as well as our fund balance and our fund balance of $26.8 million, of which approximately nine, one million is non-spendable. About 18.1 million is committed, leaving 7.7 million is unassigned. So we'll just draw your attention to the fact that when you think about your fund balance and, and, you know, having it fairly favorable leads to better, better bond rating and, and borrowing is cheaper. And I'll talk about that at the end here. Mr. Shook did give us a, a sort of, we sort of had a discussion on our preliminary budget, which will be given to the full board on February the 11th. Just to reiterate, we did not seek exceptions this year. And so the max percentage increase could be 3.5% up to Act One. We did have some conversations around really looking at keeping our, our, our tax increase low, given the current state of the economy. And so Zach and, and Lynn and his team are going to be putting together a conservative budget, but recognizing that we're trying to keep the, the tax increase low. We did review our, our Forecast Five data. They went over the, the year-to-date analysis of the real estate tax collections. And, you know, we, we, we had a budget deficit of about $4.8 million. And although we anticipate that coming down, it's trending in the, in the right direction. Our revenues aren't off significantly from, from years prior, so it's a good thing. He gave us a grant updates. There's no official word from the Pennsylvania Education Department about the second wave of the stimulus funds. However, the Pennsylvania Association of School Board officials has put together some estimates for the district, which could yield roughly $1.6 million for the district. He did review some charter school enrollment updates. And as we've been discussing over the course of the last several months, our charter schools attendance has increased from 212 to 239 students. The vast majority of them attend the cyber charter schools. This could result in an increase of about $1.7 million compared to last year. So we're monitoring this closely, as is the administration. Compensatory education projects, and you can remember this was, we weren't sure how this was going to play out. This was really for our IEP group to assess students and their needs, given the current state. And there was, there was numbers thrown around over the last several months. But the initial estimate was north of $1 million and, and right now we believe that the projected cost could be somewhere in the $300,000 range, which is also a, a positive thing. So our refinancing of our, our bonds, and I spoke to you earlier that we have a, a healthy general fund. And so our bonds went out the bid. There was, there's 47 bids from 13 underwriting organizations. And it looks like that we could save approximately $1.56 million on our overall, on the, on the life of the bond, so well above what we, what we had initially projected. Updated on attritional savings, again, the projection for attritional savings is about $2.4 million this year. That's one of the biggest reasons that our deficit is shrinking. Obviously, Mr. Shook did, did kind of say that administrate, administration typically feels comfortable entering a school year with a budget deficit of approximately $1 million because of this attritional savings that we, we see with retirements. Unfortunately, our food service update was not favorable. We project a, a significant loss somewhere in, in the neighborhood of half a million dollars from, from prior years. And, and we're continuing to, to look and monitor that fairly closely, but we will have to transfer some funds into our, our food services fund if necessary to pay off the bill. And then lastly, we talked about the RFP for auditing services. As Zach did kind of inform the board that it's, it's typical that every three years we put out an RFP for auditing services. And, and we've had three years with our, our current auditors, the Barbara Kane Thornton and company, the group. They've been great to work with, but it's, it's typical that we rotate auditors for, for, so they don't become comfortable with the entire organization and, and that there's other folks that have an opportunity to look at, at our finances, the way we're doing business. Zach, did I miss anything? Did I state anything differently? Anything you wanted to add?
I think you covered everything very comprehensive.
John, anything else? Anybody, anybody on the finance committee, anything I missed? Nope. All right. That's all I got. I yield back my time.
Thank you, sir, for yielding back your time. Zach, man, you are crushing it and always finding ways for us to save money, refinancing those bonds. Awesome job with your team as well. We appreciate that.
Ask a question? Because I think it's related to finance. It's kind of been on my mind about the bus thing situation.
Explain, sir.
We were renegotiating our bus contract for next year.
We have an RFP that is actually, that we're putting out there for not only our current bus company, but also others to bid on with a specific criteria.
Do we think that's going to come back higher or do we, are we budgeting for that?
We, we are planning for the options, but we're going to get the proposals back here. What, February, Zach?
Yeah, so the, the bids are due February 4th. We'll take a day or two to analyze them. We do have a, a sort of an ad hoc transportation committee that Wayne McCullough, who's from Pazbo and is our consultant for this, working with me, will, will meet with them to review the results. The goal is to award the contract in March. So, you know, I, I, again, I don't know what those results are going to be, but it's been quite some time since we've bid that out. And we had a state audit last year and it was actually recommended by the state that we, we bid out when our contract expired, those services.
And, and Dave, there is one other hopeful thing on the horizon with transportation that once redistricting is done, maybe that would be a little bit more streamlined as well. And without the COVID, different start times for tech schools and stuff, hopefully.
Thank you for the time.
All right. Moving along to my report, I really don't have a lot. One thing I, we, the board had a discussion recently about academics and I did want to just pose this to the board, your thoughts on it. And for the public's knowledge is that we know that virtual students are disproportionately doing poorly, more poorly in terms of their grades. And the question was brought up, you know, should the board require those students to come back to in-person? And I think that right now, obviously during a pandemic, it would be difficult for us to require that. However, I saw on social media the way that another district is handling this. And the way they're handling that is if they have a student who is virtual, who is failing, I don't know where you would benchmark that. They have a meeting with the parent and the board strongly recommends that the student come back for in-person learning. And if the parent and, you know, the parent and the student decide strongly that they want to continue to have their child do virtual learning for whatever reason, that they sign a document that states, hey, the board did have the, not the board, I'm sorry, the district did have this conversation. We had the meeting. You understand our recommendation and, and you still want to continue doing virtual. So I thought it was kind of a, a good idea. I don't know if we have to go as far as that, but I think, you know, having at least a conversation to, and we may be doing this to some extent already, but having the conversation to where it's at least engaging the parent and, and letting them know that this is pretty serious and that, you know, what we're seeing is the trends is that kids are doing better when they are in person. So I just wanted to throw that out there and ask if you think that's worth us looking at or not so much.
As long as the pandemic still exists, I believe we're going to have to have a virtual system of some form. Simply because we're not going to be. Simply because we're not going to be authorized with the power by PDE, I would imagine, to force all children back in the buildings if they have a justification for continuing in a virtual setting.
No, that's understood. And I know that there's no way that we're going to be able to, to tell them, sorry, I'm plugging in my charger. There's no way that we're going to be able to tell them they have to required. But at least having the meeting with the parent and letting them know. Cause one, one of the things that we're seeing is some students who have done historically well in the years prior, who this year they went, they've gone virtual and they've kind of taken a dive. And even if that's not common, that we have that meeting and we have the recommendation.
But Dr. Hoffman or Dr. Harner, i- is there a, an intervention schedule, I guess, with kids that are failing that are in virtual already established?
When?
Somebody reach out to the student or the family?
Yes.
Dr. Hoffman, I'll let you go first.
Thank you. Yes. So that's the, the work right now of building principals and school counselors. They're spending a good amount of time reaching out to families, both for attendance and then also for grades and work completion. So that's already in place. Certainly we don't, you know, if the family is still interested in keeping their student virtual, we aren't requiring them to make a change in that, but they are notified and having conversation. And then also I'm sure Mrs. Plon could speak more to this, but for any student who has an IEP, there's an, an extra layer of those meetings. And then certainly there's some different things that they can do in terms of ensuring that students who have an IEP receive the support that they need and, and come back into school if, if they need more support.
So it is suggested already that in some cases it might be more helpful for kids to come back into school?
Right. And you know, just speaking quite frankly, we do face some outside pressure from cyber charter schools. If we push a family who's not interested in bringing their child back, they leave. And we have seen that happen a number of times this year when we've asked for students to, you know, log in a little more regularly or, you know, meet some attendance guidelines. We had a couple of students semi-recently at the high school who went, when they met with the principal and counselor to talk about, you know, trying to reengage in school, they then, you know, chose to leave. So there's a variety of, of things that we're working through and trying to keep our students here and, and keep them moving forward. Find out whether or not it is an issue of them being uncomfortable coming into school. For some students and families, that's a very real issue. So we, we don't want to push there, but we want to try to find other ways. Can we set up weekly meetings with you? Can we engage with you? Know at the end of the school day, maybe during some of that time when the students have left the building. So we have a lot of those things in place right now.
Hoffman, would this all, would this exertion of, of influence or whatever, however you want to phrase whatever, Kellen's theory is, wouldn't that also open us up for some potential liability? Because you know, if we're saying we recommend students come back in, even though we're in a county where the PDE and, and all those are saying we should still be virtual. Can't the, you know, parents turn around and say, well, you're forcing us to do something we don't want? Would that be an issue?
I, I mean, I suppose that it could be. And that's why we, we aren't, you know, we're just putting the facts for parents. We want them to understand what, what we have to offer in the school. And that what we have to offer them if they're not comfortable coming to school. And so that's where some of those meetings where we've had principals who have, have been able to set up times where with school counselors, maybe the, the child meets virtually and, and sometimes with case managers, for instance, for IP students, they actually, you know, sit and do some work on the Google Meet. So the, the teacher is there and they're there and they're just, you know, helping them process through and giving them like a dedicated time to get caught up on some work. The things that we might have done in person. So that we're using some of those strategies now. And you saw in that board workshop that at the high school level who presented, we are seeing those numbers go down pretty dramatically. So we hope that that continues, that failure numbers.
I was going to say at the, the workshop that we did on the other day. There's no forcing, as far as I know, like there, there is no, you have to come to school. There's none of that going on. So I want to expunge that from the record, you know, you use that word. I know you mean it directly. But I'll make sure the audience knows we are not. Right. Right. No, I, I just was worried that the perception from what Kellen was saying would be that, you know, if we recommend that they come back to school because they're, they're having an issue, you know, could parents turn that around and see that as us trying to force them back when they don't want to?
Yeah. I think, I think, I think the question was, was valid. I think it's, it's, you know, I think, Brian, to your point, there's, you know, obviously. You know, risk mitigation strategies on both sides. I think that the school district that she describes is trying to, you know, obviously mitigate their own risk for the parents coming back later on and saying, well, my kid failed and you did nothing about it. And, you know, on the opposite side is, is you saying, you know, well, you're forcing me to come back to school.
Right.
So we're sort of stuck between a rock and a hard place. I think, you know, from the sounds of it, it sounds like Dr. Hoffman really illustrated that, you know, the school district is doing what it needs to do. It probably documenting, I'm, I'm sure in some regard, those conversations that take place. And, and that's the best we can do. I don't know that we could ever stop litigation ever. And there's always a possibility. But the best I think we can do is mitigate it and, and what, but more importantly is, is get the, is get the kid, the, the student, you know, e- either in a virtual learning capacity or in, in a in-person learning capacity. And, and that's all you could do is your best. You can't force anybody to do anything.
Boy, what a tough, what a tough job, right? For our counselors and teachers and it is, I, and for parents, I, I know that if, you know, you have a difficult situation at home where you really prefer it not for your kid to be in person, but yet your kid is failing, you know, that, that must be difficult. But the trend is moving in a, in a great direction, a positive direction. So as I mentioned in our workshop, I think we just make adjustments as we go and do the best we can. And I'm glad that we're having those conversations. At least, you know, with the parents so they, they can see. And this is not an issue that's just with Quakertown. It's a nationwide issue. And I'm really proud of this district that we have our kids back for the option for five days a week and that our health and safety plan thus far has been rock solid.
I just.
Could I just, I'm sorry, can I just clarify one thing that I don't, I don't want to leave this being misunderstood in terms of litigation for our students with IEPs. If we recommend that they come into school and they aren't doing that, Mrs. Plon and her team are working hard to make sure that they sign a waiver agreement. Some of those that you've seen so that they cannot come back then and tell us that we did not provide the free and appropriate education for them. So for that population, Mr. McCutcheon, I didn't want that to go without being said.
Maybe that is what, what this other district was referring to. Now it makes sense that that would be the case. Okay. So I'm glad that we are documenting that. Dave, you had a question?
Yeah, you know, in the back of my mind, I, I just remember there's, there's going to be this small population, people that kind of get lost in the cracks because maybe we didn't engage enough. If they weren't engaged physically in school or they weren't thriving and they're definitely not thriving at home. Almost as a shame to feel like, you know, we let them stay at home and they didn't do any better. And so what did we do when they weren't doing any better? When, you know, we gave them the option to stay home? There will be that small population. Of course, I don't think you can do everything for everybody, but I just want to make sure that, you know, as a district, we stay conscious of those, that, that small population, top everything.
David, they started that process the first weekend we got back in September. They started making phone calls home. How come you haven't turned on your computer? How come you haven't done this? Haven't done that? And as you've seen, with some of the statistics, we, we know when everyone's turning stuff on, we don't, and, and Joe has provided a really good summary of that by day, by time of day. And our counselors administrators have been calling home. Teachers have been calling home. So I'm, we're on it, have a, a good plan. We're far from where we need to be with a lot of them, but we're, as Caitlin said, you know, we're getting a lot better.
And Dave, they can also read how many times you log into your computer and read these reports ahead of time. So you'll be getting graded on that later.
Too funny. Yeah, that's all, um, that's all I really had. I, I did also, I mean, we've already mentioned it before, but it's exciting news that there is this vaccine that is going to be available to our staff very soon. And I will tell you, I was for sure personally skeptical when I first started doing some research, but now that I have done the research, I would just encourage everyone, especially if you're feeling skeptical, skeptical, do a little bit of research into what it's all about. And, and you know, if it's something that, that you feel comfortable with, then I would encourage you to get the vaccine. All right. I'm going to move on to our fiscal agenda. And we have the approval of the Boucher and James December 2020 bill as presented. I'll need a motion for that.
So moved, since I'm unmuted.
Second, John Kern.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose or abstention?
I wish to abstain.
Okay, motion passes with one abstention. Moving on to the fiscal consent agenda. We have the November 2020 treasurer's report, December 2020 treasurer's report, December 2020 bills list, December 2020 budget transfers, authorization to solicit requests for proposals for auditing services, approved license agreement with the Musical Theater International, authorization to solicit bids for the 2021 musical instruments. And so I will need a motion for those items.
So moved, Steve Klein.
I'll second, Mr. Reimers.
Discussion.
I did want to bring up one thing. The musical theater line item, I, I, I'm, I'm certainly glad that we are doing a musical this year. I sure hope that we can get to do it on a stage somewhere, whether it be indoor, outdoor.
It is scheduled to be at the University Community Center down in Quakertown.
Yeah, that's, that's the rumor I heard. That's kind of why I brought that up and that, that would be a great, that would be a great thing for the kids to be able to do. So yeah, I am glad that that did come up, Ben.
I just want to point out out loud, it's into the woods. So everyone knows for the benefit of the community.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, somebody spoiled the prize, surprise for the kids because this got put up on the board docs before. And I, I think the Ms. Camberne was trying to hold it as a surprise, but the kids figured out how to work board docs and
Wow.
Got a sneak peek.
Not exactly rocket science.
That's true, but what would motivate a student to look in board docs? You know, not the most exciting stuff. For them.
Have been pretty awesome the last few years.
They might've been looking for our major awards from PSBA.
That's it.
Were you hoping for the light up lamp, John?
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that mo- those motions carry unanimously. Did we get any public comments? And so far, I just wanted to check in.
But there was, you passed over actually.
Cause I, I just noticed that on the agenda, we have them again. I know we normally do them in the beginning and the end. So I just wanted to check in to see if we've had any, any others submitted thus far.
No, there has been no further submit submissions.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Moving on to the facilities consent agenda, we have the approval of Nighting Elementary School Furniture Change Order with corporate interiors and approval of Johnson Control Service Contract for the same school. I'll need a motion.
So moved.
I'll second, Chris.
Discussion.
I, I had a go ahead. Elevator? Says isn't there, didn't we pay for an elevator?
Yeah, there's an elevator.
Why are they charging us to carry stuff where where there's no elevator?
Well, I, I had a different question. I don't know if you're going to get an answer.
I don't know the answer to that one. Does anyone know the answer to that?
Where are you looking at? Which line item or what page?
Number 11A.
Yeah, I can answer. Might've been done before the elevator was operational. That's my guess.
Correct. So when we originally worked through this contract with the furniture company, part of the installation, the expectation, the elevator would be operational. Again, this is another product of the, the sort of the mad rush back in September to, to get into the building. So we had to change delivery dates. So when they were originally supposed to deliver, they weren't able to because they weren't able to get in. So they had to store it. Then when they did get in, we still didn't have the elevator up and running. The elevator, actually, we didn't get the permit until after the school year started. So again, just part of the, the rush there at the end.
Thank you for answering my question.
Yep.
And Zach, I had another question for you on, on the other item in here, either you or Rob. These contract with Johnson Controls, do, do we have a separate contract for each building or is there one contract for the whole district? Cause I know we have, I've seen Johnson Control contracts come about in other board meetings.
I mean, I would defer to Rob, but I'm not sure he's on here. Each building does have a separate agreement.
Rob's here.
Is he in?
Joe, would you want to mute?
By Joe.
One of the attendees, two of the attendees. Make sure you get the right one.
And, and I guess my, my other question would be, would it, would we be able to negotiate as a district instead of individual buildings to possibly get better rates moving forward with something like that?
Joe, are you able to promote? Yeah, I ju- I just did. There's two of them. So I'm hoping I picked the right one. I'll text them.
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, there we go.
Yes, the reason this contract came in late is obviously because of the construction, but typically our contracts run from July 1st until June 30th. So we do have a three-year contract with Simplex Control, but every year we issue them a new PO. But, uh, I don't know if we would get a discount because I have all of our buildings. But I do try to, you know, shop them down a bit in prices because of the service contract and, and all the work that they do do.
Okay, yeah, it's, you know, I've just seen it multiple times. So that's why I wondered if we have actual separate contracts that all come due at different times and, you know, maybe.
No, I, I have this one actually laid out now because it's a shorter contract. So this will have basically, it, this will actually be a two and a half year contract because we're six months into this contract. So this will expire on June 30th of, of 21, and then I'll issue a new PO under the same contract. So I believe it's 23 or 24, all of the contracts will have to be renewed at that point.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Rob and Zach.
Moving on to our human resources consent agenda, on that agenda, we have professional staff, confidential staff, support staff and unit pay. I'll need a motion on those items.
I'm moved. Second, Mr. Jackson.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is the policy and program items. On that, we have the 2021, 2022 school calendar and the approval of the first reading of the policies that were mentioned earlier. I will need a motion.
So moved, Mr. Reimers.
Second, Mr. Klein.
Discussion. The calendar, this is exciting. I don't know that there's really anything significant that's changed on here.
This year. Starting August 30th and ending June 13th, it looks like.
Okay.
Are we able to open on election day yet? Ha, 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 ha.
We have it there still? This year? Is there one?
I'm sure it's so, I'm sure it's so closed.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Uh, next we All right. Uh, next we have information items. There's not really any information on here. So there, this is about the school start time committee. I know that is going to be something that we're going to revisit outside of that. Ms. Edwards, is there anything or Dr. Horner that you wanted to add on to that? Just that we're going to be looking at revisiting that again, right?
Yes.
Okay. There is a December suspension report. December 2020 EOM enrollment counts. There's an SRO report for November and December. Financial statement and single audit report for the year ending 630 2020. December reopening survey results from teachers and staff. Next is new business. Do we have any new business from board members? Well, well, well. Looks like we're going to have a short board meeting. Too bad we, we can't have our. What did we say before, John? Like if we get out by what time?
I'm buying.
Yeah.
By nine o'clock.
Darn.
We have an IOU.
IOU.
Get to the house.
We just have to buy french fries if we go.
That's right.
That's true.
Unlike we never, it's not like we, I'm pretty sure we always bought something. Yeah.
My only new business is for God's sake, can somebody make sure that I don't look like a doofus on the thumbnail for YouTube, please? Those of you who know, who've seen it.
Yep, yep, yep.
Now you have to go look.
Yeah, there was a bad weekend there, wasn't there?
Oh my gosh, it was hilarious. It really was a good laugh, really was.
Now I need to know what happened or what, where was it?
I'll text you.
Okay.
It was one of the board meetings. You know how they have a thumbnail for YouTube? And my face was so ridiculous. I was laughing, but it was like, eh, like it was just. The most ridiculous face that I think that I've ever, I ever could have made. And that's what people see when they go to our board meeting. They see my ridiculous face.
Who was it who chose that pose? I want.
Joe can edit it.
YouTube actually probably automatically picks it.
It does, but you can edit it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whoever puts it up can choose the thumbnail. So.
Help me out here, Joe, next time. Help me out.
He chose to willfully ignore the, the, the bad picture and.
He's like, everybody needs a good laugh. Isn't that what he did?
You on it.
Hey, I laugh, laugh at my expense. It's all good.
It is.
I laughed. That's right. Um, all right. Any final public comment? Yep. All right. Uh, we have some important dates here. Uh, we have a board meeting, February 11th, March 11th. I'm not going to go through all of them, April 8th. There's some other information there for anyone that is interested. And with that, I'll need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second, Mr.
Not fast enough, Keith, not fast enough.
The record, this is a record.
Uh, no, we had a 45 minute one two years ago.
He wasn't there though.
Yeah.
Oh, you missed that one.
He has. I think though it may have been the shortest superintendent's report.
That, that was it.
Three and a half years.
Yeah, yeah, that was true. That's true. Good call.
Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Be well, everyone. Bye-bye.
Aye.